Mr. Moore.
Hey, good morning, Mr. Hostel.
Good morning, sir. You were live in the meeting.
Good morning, Councilman Moore. Can you hear us, Larry?
Can you hear the mayor, Mr. Moore?
Uh, valid, but good morning to everyone.
Good morning. Good morning. We would like to welcome you all to our call meeting in the discussion of community improvement district. As always, we'll open up our meetings with prayer. Let us pray. My gracious heavenly Father, we love you, we thank you, we magnify you, and we adore you, God. Now, we ask now, God, to your Holy Spirit will come in and enable us, Father God, to make the best decisions, a lot of decision that doesn't look like us, but a decision that looks like you. And as always, God, we don't just pray for this city, God, but we pray for this world that we live in. Pray that your mighty hand will be upon it, God, that you will lead and guide, Father God, us in your direction. In your son Jesus's name we do pray. Amen and thank God.
Amen.
Let the minutes reflect it. All councils is present. Number three on the agenda is discussion of the CID resolution. Mr. Baker, we asked that you would come and explain the CID, and after which we were asked that Mr. Byron Lombard would take the podium.
Okay, I think everybody probably recognizes me. I get older every month, but then that's a good thing. I hope I continue to do that. But first of all, I appreciate the call for the meeting today on such short notice. We have been working on drafting legislation for a CID district for the Oconee Town Center area over where many of you know that we're now moving forward after sixteen and a half years that Home Depot's been open, the economy is back with us, and most of the tenants that we had back in 2006 are back with us. And so recently, you've probably seen that we've got the Longhorn sign up, and we just, in the last three days, got the new Racetrack Petroleum sign up where it's gonna go. We're hoping that Starbucks will get open in about thirty to forty-five days, which is next to the Chick-fil-A. And of course, we all know Chick-fil-A, Burger King, and the Hilton, True Hilton have been open for a bit now. And of course, you all are familiar with the fact that we've got the Holiday Inn Express that's gonna be coming. This week, we had my engineering team from Atlanta that has been working for us for about three decades on projects we have in Atlanta and around the metropolitan area. And we're really trying to now sort out and plan the areas that you guys have, some of y'all have seen, maybe not all of you, on the bubble map of the overall Oconee Town Center, where the commercial and the residential, and it's fairly just been in big bubble areas where we put colors on where different commercial or residential will be, and showing the boulevards that are gonna come in off of Highway forty-four as the road gets widened. And this week, we actually went out there. If you drove down forty, or if you drive down Highway forty-four, you'll see a bunch of survey stakes everywhere, and that's where we've been doing topos and really trying to look at how we're gonna ultimately move the dirt for what we hope to be a bigger shopping center. We obviously are hopeful that we'll be able to attract some tenants that need to be here. And I'm gonna say, i.e., I don't want anybody to think that I've got Kroger, but Kroger is a tenant that we will be certainly trying to invite to our area, and we think it's needed. But we'll build shopping centers around the nucleus of what we've got already started on the Oconee Connector there, forty-four, and also Town Center Boulevard where Home Depot is. The reason for a CID, and I'll explain what a CID is more closely, but CIDs are where you can have as a development area a millage of zero to five mills. Obviously, zero mills doesn't help you, but you can't have more than five mills added to a tax base. But if, in fact, I apologize, I didn't have everybody's emails. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, I sent you guys some articles yesterday, and if it's possible that y'all could share those with members of your council. They're very good articles about CIDs in and around the metropolitan Atlanta area. But we have been talking to, for several months, in fact, I even had mentioned to the city attorney, Mr. Nelson, a couple of months ago, that we were working on trying to get the legislation, you know, in place to where we could go to our state representative, which is Trey Rhodes. In order to enact a CID, it must have county legislation, no matter what part of the state you're in. Wherever the county is, you have to first have a legislative act by the county that you're gonna be forming a CID in. And then that county is drafts a resolution, which we have had. My office engaged Lynn Rainey. Mr. Rainey is considered to be the foremost authority of CID legislation in Georgia. What we believe is probably the best CID in Georgia is in and around Cobb County and Cumberland Mall. I don't want that to sound like there's nobody else that has a, not a good one, because there are many of them. And in the articles that I sent, you'll read about those that have been very benefited from it. But if anybody's been in the battery area where the SunTrust Park, now Truist Park, Cumberland Mall area, Galleria, they have lots of, you know, multi-story buildings and lots of big multimillion-dollar assets, and they are part of a CID which generates funds to that CID board. And then they have the right to help make improvements that they feel will help benefit that area. And that has been done very well in the Cumberland Mall area. With a CID, we have, as for instance, in our Oconee Town Center legislation, we have a total of seven board members. And you have to have a minimum of six, but we have seven board members. And the state requires that each county that you're in has to have a representative appointed from the county. And then in the case of if you're in a city, which we will be, all of my property is in the city, then the city has to have a representative appointed. And then the balance of the seven committee board will be made up of property owners. And of course, the overall aspect is that the property owners are the main ingredients of the board, because they're the ones that have the money to benefit their properties and whatever they need within their, the CID district. A CID district is made up of the properties, which if any of you may or may not have seen what acute public, but our tax assessor's office, you'll have each pieces, each piece or parcel of property that you have has a tax ID number. And so when it is formed, when the CID is formed ultimately, then the initial properties will agree or consent to become part of the CID. And then that partial will be incorporated into what is the legal formation of the CID. For the, anybody thereafter that might want to join that CID, when I say anyone, a property owner with property, they would have to have the board to approve them to come in. So if they don't come in in the beginning, it then is all up to the board in allowing them to come in. Generally, there shouldn't be a reason that you would deny them to come in unless there was some technical reason of why you wouldn't want them in, sharing your money. But the point is, if you don't pass this legislation and get it in place, let's say, today, I mean, when I say today, let's use 2023. And obviously, the only time you can ever get it in a legislative form is during the session of the Senate and the House. So I really apologize in that it took us, we're almost late in the game, because the crossover day for bills to be passed in the Rules Committee and come out, if it doesn't come out, you can't even go to the floor and get voted on. This is not a very difficult legislation for the Senate or the House to pass, because most everybody that is in the House or the Senate knows that it is a help, actually, to the local governments. Because the CID money can be used for infrastructure improvements. And in fact, I was just mentioning and talking to one of your school board members here, Steve and I were discussing that the waterline that the city is helping pay for right now on Metacrest, and that the school board's helping pay, and everybody's contributing, we wouldn't, in the early years of this CID, we will not have a lot of money. Because if you can imagine having two mills or three mills against a tax base that we have over there now, it'll be small amounts of money. But if you could visualize ten years and twenty years out, and let's just hypothetically say, and I don't wanna scare anybody, but let's say you had a multi-story office building over there, and it was, you know, a few places like that along the interstate over there, like you see in Cumberland Mall. We're not gonna see anything like Cumberland Mall with twenty-story buildings or what have you, but we could certainly have buildings that are very valuable, and even the Home Depot is a valuable building. And when shopping centers come in, it will be a lot of tax base and value. Well, when they pay two or three mills, or whatever number of mills they pay, that money comes in, those type developments are not just gonna happen overnight. But if you do not have them in place, and then fifteen or twenty years down the road, you say, gosh, I wish we had a CID, because we could be really helping with hundreds of thousands of dollars to help the city have improvements. Well, you then go try to do a CID, and you form this legislation, and guess who doesn't wanna come in? Is those big buildings and those big shopping center tenants, they don't want to have more. But when they make their decision to come in, and you already have the CID in place, it doesn't really have any effect to them, because they're coming here to do business. I think I have shown to some of you and people within the county, I know Steve's seen my shopping center when it was nothing. You remember in 1999, I had land in an area called McDonough, Georgia, that was nothing but cows and pasture land. And then in 2006, which was immediately after I moved the almost a million yards of dirt here at Oconee Town Center, which we were thinking that we were building the Walmart and the Home Depot and all the things, some of the things were now Chick-fil-A and Racetrack, they were all with us in '05 and '06 when I was moving all that dirt. We were just a big old hole in the ground over there. And when we did the water tower and donated the land and the funds to build the tower, and we got a bond, I mean, a grant from the government to help build a water tower, which now gives us, in this city, and as I've told the mayor previously, you know, Greensboro is the only city and the only area in this whole county that's got utilities. And it's what's really beneficial to the future of this city and the growth and the community that it can be. But the point being is that we're just trying to get ahead of the game, because I have been, come this September, I will have been in business fifty-three years. And I've learned a lot. I won't say I know it all by any means. I'm gonna continue to learn. But I wish that my center in McDonough, where I had nothing in 2006 and started grading, today I have nine hundred and ten thousand square feet of shopping center, generating a little over a hundred and thirty million dollars in tax base. Okay, I'm speaking of the property value, okay, that the county and city of McDonough benefit from. And then in terms of the state of Georgia, and the county of Henry County, and the city of McDonough, that get to share in that tax revenue, I have now, with the opening of BJ's, we will approach a hundred and seventy million dollars in sales this year. And that generates millions of dollars of tax base. Now, I don't, you don't see me in the paper out here. I try to stay away from that, because anything that people think that are gonna happen like that, all they wanna do is, whatever this next-door neighbor and all this other, they'll just complain about you and run you out of town. But I'm telling you that many of y'all have heard me say, and Mr. Lombard here at the county knows as well, all of the development that happened down around the lake at Reynolds happened because that's where people lived. And for any of us to think, and I wish that I could be here when it really gets there, not sure, I told the mayor the other day, I hope that God blesses me long enough to be able to see some of these things come about. But for anybody that can't visualize that there are gonna be more population between I-20 and Harbor Club than anywhere in this county. And so I actually, I don't want to say anything to be controversial here, but I'm excited about the school coming south of I-20, because it's gonna help us and Warehouser, who, Warehouser and myself, to help develop a very nice community and residential environment in and around Oconee Town Center. And to that point, I wanna make this, because I think this is vitally important, the CID district for tax has no effect to residential, only commercial. Okay? So even though the CID district might include our residential properties, and say fifteen hundred acres, or four hundred acres, or whatever we start out with, it cannot have any impact to tax burden to a resident. Okay? Only to commercial structures. And I think that's vitally important. The reason why we will incorporate, when I say incorporate, I don't mean from a legal standpoint of an entity, but from the CID district being formed of X acres, and let's say four hundred acres, five hundred acres, or fifteen hundred acres, whatever we end up having, it's because you don't really know where all your commercial, you know about where you think your commercial's gonna be. And your commercial's gonna be along the main highways, and along Metacrest, along Town Center Boulevard, along I-20, if you will. But we will, we will use and take all the property we can into the CID, not that it's all gonna be taxed, it's just, it then will be inside the CID, and if there are commercial pockets that happen where you don't know they will happen, they'll already be covered, so that you can benefit from that revenue. But to the point, it has no effect to any residential user or property owner, only to commercial people, owners. So I'll take any questions you may have. I don't know if I've been completely encompassing any thoughts you have, so I'll ask for any questions. But in a simple nutshell, it won't really, this CID won't be able to do a lot for any of this until we get more over there. And when I say over there, meaning in the area that Oconee Town Center is developing out of. But we are gonna have a new Longhorn, and a new Racetrack Petroleum, and a new Taco Bell, and new hotel, and what you already see that we have there. And those will start, you know, moving small amounts of money every year. It'll take a bit to build up. But I'm really trying to make sure that we get in place legislation and a CID, so that when we get bigger shopping centers, and again, I don't wanna scare anybody to say that we're gonna do what we did in McDonough overnight, because my overnight in McDonough was from 2006 to 2023, and I, it's like I've told other people in the county and in the city that are fearful of me as a developer, first of all, I'd like to say that I would put any development I've had in fifty-three years up against any of its like kind. It's nothing but quality. I hope anybody that sees the buildings I have over there, even on the Home Depot, I made them have the corbels up top, and I had them rock on, it's the only Home Depot in the country that has that. And we're gonna continue to stand with very strict standards for Oconee Town Center, because growth is not a bad thing if you have the right kind of growth and quality. And it's all about jobs. And what we have the need of in this city and this county is right now employees. And an employee can't even afford, there's no new homes that are, that are in the, what I call the range of two hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollar range of where you get those people coming into our area that are the people that will be working here, and employees, and not somebody that has some big mansion somewhere. We're missing the element to bring the average American here. And there's many people that would love to be here. Having the new schools and the things that are forthcoming, I wish, I wish I was as young as I was when I started over here. I told the mayor, hard to believe, he's the age of my son. And I don't wanna sound selfish, but I wish I was my son rather than me. And he's forty years old, forty-one years old. But to the point I'm making is that this area, Greensboro, and this county is, I live here eighty to eighty-five percent of the time, and I still have my home and my residence in Atlanta, but I come back out here as quick as I can. I've been in Atlanta three days, and I was here last, got here last night, and glad to be back here. And I just wish that I could be here, you know, years in the future to see what this all turns out, because it's gonna be very well. So at this point, let me just ask if there's any questions. I hope, Mr. Mayor, if you, I can have printed out if you, if y'all can't, on what I had sent yesterday, but I think it would be good if everybody could read about it, because you'll see the opportunities that the CID gives for the development, the developers, to help government with infrastructures that you might otherwise not have all the money for.
Thank you so much. What I wanna do, because my attorney has to leave, let me get Mr. Lombard to come.
Sure.
And then we'll go from there.
As he comes up, come on up, come on up. As I mentioned, the state law is that even with my seven members that we have on the board, okay, five of them being made up of property owners, the state law requires you have to have a, one representative appointed by the county that you're in. If you're not any, you don't have to have a city person appointed unless you're in the city. And in my case, I'm in the city. So we have to have not only the city, but we have to also have a county representative, which is just two of the seven votes.
Let me add, I think that Mr. Baker is here because he owns all the property that would be the four hundred acres.
I think Mr. Baker's the one who has asked for the city to consider this, because his property would be affected by a CID and could benefit from it. And I apologize for Mr. Lombard, you had to listen to me talk while you stand there. But what our office is doing is attempting to make sure that the city has all the options available to it with respect to how this CID's put in place. Generally, Mr. Baker is correct. Everything he's provided with regard to how you raise money and what it impacts, what our office is doing is reviewing how other jurisdictions have put in CIDs and trying to compare the proposal that you have. Just so everybody understands, the local legislation has to be adopted first, meaning the state of Georgia has to say it's okay to do a CID. That law that creates that right, that sets in it how you do it. So that's what we're trying to figure out. And we've been in contact with Representative Rhodes's office, and he's told us that you guys take until Monday to make your decision. So we're gonna work over between what we hear today and comments that we get from the council, try to get you guys the best product to consider Monday night. And it may be a little different than what we already have in place, or it may be that we say what's been presented is okay. We're gonna work through that. But our goal here is to make sure that we give a product that citizens of Greensboro have the input on what happens, with also making sure that if there are issues in the future between the county and the city, we don't leave those unanswered. We try to give as much information in the legislation to solve those beforehand. So that's kind of where we are right now. And I, Mr. Mayor, I do, I am gonna have to leave out, because, you know, I gotta speed. I don't want the sheriff, let the sheriff know, at least I did for Putnam County, that I'm gonna be going pretty quick. But Tom's gonna stay around too, in case you'll have any questions. Tom knows more about this than I do, so.
Thank you so much. Mr. Lombard, would you like to add on to what Mr. Baker has already said?
Well, so Mr. Baker did a good job of explaining how the CID works. I think I'm here, you asked if I would come just to share the county's perspective.
Yes, sir.
And I'm glad to come anytime. I'm not here to try to sell you on anything, because I think that's the surest way for y'all to vote against it, and so I'm trying to advocate for it. So just to be clear, the county commission met yesterday morning unanimously voted in favor of sending notice to Representative Trey Rhodes that they were supportive of the local legislation. I will just share some of the comments, even comments I made about it really being a no-brainer. We're still rural Georgia. You're still a small city in rural Georgia. We're not positioned to go in and facilitate growth. We're just not there. Even, even the mean old big county is not there to help facilitate growth. So I think that this CID, the way I looked at it, and I believe the way the commissioners looked at it, is it will help accelerate very high-quality growth at the exit one-thirty that will benefit the community. This is not a county thing. It's not a city thing to me. If the law didn't require the county to have a representative on it, you know, we would, we have no preference to be on it, because it's really gonna be controlled by those property owners. They're controlling their fate and how, what kind of quality they have. Streetlights, you know, we don't have streetlights out in the county. So CID can fund streetlights, water, sewer, roads, all types of infrastructure that we're just not positioned to ever fund. And I know it's a challenge for the city. You guys do it, but I'm glad we don't have to. That's quite a challenge. So the CID will help that. It'll just help accelerate what we know is coming. Well, that acceleration, of course, helps generate more sales tax, more property tax, more population, more growth. If anything, this is a community thing, and that community is predominantly going to be Greensboro. As that area develops, there's no question you guys are gonna annex it in. So it's really more to the benefit of Greensboro. But we definitely see value, you know, the stronger Greensboro is, the stronger the county is. So we see value in it for the county as well, because we get that property tax. So for us, it was an easy decision. And it definitely does not bring money to the county or money to the city. It brings money to that CID that then inherently builds value that we all get to benefit from because of the way our tax structure works. So, you know, commissioners were thankfully very supportive. Representative Rhodes doesn't have to have either one of our supports, but I appreciate the fact that he wants to know from Greensboro and the county, anytime local legislation's going in that affects either one of us. So we did it. And, you know, I think that if, if you guys can wrap your minds around it a lot more, I've had advance notice of CIDs. I've dealt with them before. There's nothing evil about them. They're, they can be a very, very great tool. Even if this legislation goes in, there will still be a resolution that would be required later by the city and/or the county. So this is, you get two bites at this apple. So this isn't, you're done, you walk away from this, and all of a sudden there's a CID. In order, once the legislation's in, that creates the legislative framework, so that then you, as a local government later, can make a decision as to whether or not you wanna stand it up. So just bear that in mind, too. This isn't like a binding, you make a decision now and you're stuck. That's not the case. And the property owners that are subject to the CID can always do away with the CID later. So, you know, it's, it's just a great tool. We have tax districts out in the county. These are very similar to tax districts. Those tax districts have been very successful for the county. The difference is, we still have to manage those tax districts. The money still comes to the county. We're responsible for it. We have to have audits done on that money, and we have to manage every bit of it. This has taken a huge burden, because the CID, the money goes straight to the CID Governance Board, and they manage it. They're responsible for it, not the county, not the city. So that's all I really have, Mayor. If you, anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them. But Mr. Baker did a great job explaining it.
Thank you so much. And the reason you're here is because we value your opinion.
Well, I appreciate that.
Is there any question?
We got that recorded. Thank you.
Is there any questions for Mr. Lombard or Mr. Baker at this time?
I have a couple of questions to either of them. Mr. Baker, you were saying like you wanted to, to try to get this in this, this legislative sector. section.
Yes.
Trying to get this through trade. Well, and, and, and the follow-up question, so you said yes, the follow-up question was to you, Mr. Lombard, I know you said that Representative Rhodes denied our blessing from the county and all this city, he was just have, getting us involved. So, I mean, it's sounding like it's a no-brainer, but, but if he made a statement like that, why would we have to, why would we have to sit here if he, he was, he can make that just decision without us being a poeh.
Well, I would just, I mean, Representative Rhodes could probably answer that better than I can, but I believe it's respect, out of respect for the city council and out of respect for Green County. So State Representative Chanel, for as long as he was there, he always, I can't remember the exact saying, always play up, never play down. He didn't want to be involved in the local government issues. And so anything that affected the local government, he wanted that local government to have the say. And so he just always, if there was local legislation, he wanted to make absolutely certain that the local governments affected were okay with that. So Trey has, Representative Rhodes has maintained that practice. I, I appreciate that he maintains that practice because stuff could be dropped at the state legislature that we don't even know about.
Right.
And all of a sudden, we get this surprise. So that's what it is. And so I would, I would look at it more as respect, him respecting the governance of the city council and, and wanting that governance and the council to have a say in whether this goes forward or not. So that's how I would look at it.
The good point that Lombard made is this is not enacting the CID. I've got to then come back to the city and then show you our formation of CID. This is just legislation, in fact, the county could put this legislation in by itself if it requested it. And I agree with your respect of comment because I'm in the city and know that I'm going to want a CID in the city. See, I can't have that without two things happening. One is the county has to have legislation. You as a city can't go and make legislation. With the CID, you can't just go to the state and say we want a city CID. They can't approve it. You have to go through the CID legislation, which is within the parent, meaning the county. And then any city can go. They'll never have to come back. Like a human plant wanting to have a CID one day, they'll never have to come back to the county. The legislation is later. Here's a point I made about my development in McDonough. They had legislation there for 40 years and nobody even knew that it was there. And so we didn't have to go back to the, to the state to have legislation approved because this legislation was there. Our problem was, we couldn't get, we were doing a total 5,000 acres in and around my development, and I was just part of it. I wasn't even the one that started. And, and they couldn't get to 133 because we got now thousands of people there. And so this is a situation of what we're trying to accomplish while we are ruled, while we are about to start, that we get the legislation in place. Even with the legislation, if it's approved during this month, which it needs to be, then I will come back to the city within the next probably 90 days, you know? Because I don't want time to really go on. I want this, this to be in place so that when I'm building next year, let me say this, we're going to come back during the year of 2023 to the city and have our CID be approved. But that's going to be in the city and the attorney can review it, the county can review it, and it'll be what we all want it to be, what it needs to be. And then next year, within 2024, we'll be part of the tax base. So it's, I'd like to point that out in that if this doesn't not mean the CID, whatever you do today or Monday that says you're in favor of this, it doesn't mean the CID. I'm still going to come back and present the CID to the city. And, and the point being, I don't, I totally agree with Mario that I think the representative is doing a few justice in that he didn't need, he didn't need the county. He, he could have done it just me requesting it, but it shows complete respect to the county and the city because I am, I'm, while I'm in the county, I, I told the mayor, I'm the city, I mean, you know, I'm going to pay them taxes because I have to pay taxes to the city and the county, who I do really in the city. And I don't want to make it so bad, I'm a city citizen too. We're glad to be here. And I wish the county had all the children you got.
But don't say that.
That's crap. I mean, it's just, you're visiting, you know? That's why you're seeing growth around you coming to the city. But the county should not have a problem with that because they're going to get taxes just like you. And that's what it's all about is, is you can't, one day, I don't want to be shocked or anybody, but really it's going to be out of bounds. And what it does is if we not sub, substitute growth in other parts of the county with taxes, we're in big trouble because you ain't got enough money. We benefit out of Reynolds and some of those gated communities to keep your own streets healthy, you don't have to pay for it right now, you're getting all the taxes like you just were. And, and one day, we're going to be a bigger county and citizens, there are going to be more citizens outside of the gates than inside of the gates, and that'll be a great thing.
And Councilman, if I, if I could just add to, back to your, your question in terms of why y'all's input is so important at this stage, as, as these gentlemen just stated, it's a two-step process, but, but after the local legislation's in place, the council still has to be comfortable with, with what was, was put in place. And so for the, it doesn't do any good to pass legislation if it's something that, that this council can't, finds untenable. And so at this stage, if there is something that can be modified, suggestions that can be made, Representative Rhodes, that would make it better for the city, more comfortable in, in approving a CID. That would be another reason that your input at this point is, is so beneficial.
Thank you. Thank y'all so much.
I want to thank you all so much. I think that it's been said that it's a no-brainer that this CID would be a great thing for the city of Greensboro as well as some, some of the county. But at this moment, I think our, our attorney is still doing some research, trying to make sure that we, we have the right CID in place or the right act in place to make sure there's, there's nothing that needs to be amended within this resolution that was adopted yesterday by the county. So it is in our best interest of the city of Greensboro to table this until Monday night to make sure that we get everything that we need, all the information that we need. It is a great thing, this is not saying that we want to prove it, this is just saying that we want a way to make sure that we have all the information presented to us and we make the right decision based on the city of Greensboro. Do I entertain a motion now to table this until Monday night? Motion now to second.
Motion.
It's been seconded, any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Thank you. I'm saying aye, is Mr. Moore still on?
Aye.
Thank you so much, unanimous decision. Thank you so much for, for your time. Thank you, Mr. Lombard. And you, you let, you let the county commission know that we value their opinion. Yeah, we, we want to, we want to make sure that we have a long-lasting, great relationship with the county. Thank you, Mr. Baker. We'll, hopefully, we'll see you Monday night or see a representative from Baker and Lester here. Thank you all for coming out, sharing your time. Let us pray. All right, entertain a motion now to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Second.
It's been seconded, I'm sure there's no further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand or saying aye. Councilwoman Riss, will you pray us out on today?
Yes. Your Lord, we thank you for the time that we have spent making decisions for this city. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, sir. Take care.